Call regular council meeting at City Hall to order October 16, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Additions to the agenda, I'd ask for a 10-minute executive session to discuss non-elected personnel regarding potential hiring of a part-time police officer.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries for a... Citizens comments? Nope. Moving on, consent, agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting October 2, 2018. Also, special council meeting October 16 of 2018. Appropriation ordinance 10-16-18 and the amount of $18,094.39 in petty cash, 75.32.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries for a department head and committee reports. Grand Administrator Lisa Cornwell, anything for her from council? Nope. Okay, moving on. Police Chief Jim Cuday.
One item denied. Requesting permission to purchase two patrol rifles for the police department. I've reached out to Sanders Arms and Ammo here in St. John's. I asked for four quotes. He gave me a quote for a Stag Model 15, a Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P, a Colt LE 692, and a Bushmaster. After looking at them and visiting with him and checking some of the resources because I'm not a gun expert by any means, my recommendation is to move forward with the purchase of the Stag Model 15 at a cost of $842.79 apiece for a total of $1685.58. That will outfit both patrol cars. The reason for that is in case we have an active shooter or a hostage situation where a shotgun is ineffective or would potentially cause more problems, the rifles are tried and true and better. And I wanted to, if I was spending that kind of money, I was wanting to stay local with that. And I feel that was one of our better options to go without that particular brand and weapon.
Can we see quotes?
Yeah. I only have one.
That's fine.
The Stags are a little bit higher than the S&amp;W. However, the problem with that is eventually at some point, I would like to get optics for these two weapons and to replace the front thick site on the Smith &amp; Wesson and put an optic on there would be rather expensive. How expensive, I'm not sure, but probably would outweigh or pretty close outweigh that particular cost difference between the Smith &amp; Wesson and the Stag.
Council questions, comments, concerns? I assume you don't have any other rifles, is what?
We do. We currently have two 410 shotguns in the patrol vehicles. And they're, again, they're aged, but hopefully this is money that we never have to use because my goal is to never have to use any of our weapons.
I said hopefully it's a bad investment.
Yeah, but we have, I'd rather explain why we spent that money than why we get to try to spend that money.
Which obviously, of course, with seeing the quote and that he could purchase one, you know, whatever under his spending limit and going the other way and splitting invoices and doing things like that to squeeze by, Jim had talked to me and I told him, I said, you know, I said, "I'd be fine if you did one or something and later on did something." But, you know, it's certainly a good idea to come to council, explain why, talk about it, do it.
We are, I can tell you this, with the changes that I've been able to make in updating the department, we're just about there, other than one more full-time officer and stuff. We've hired a third officer. I just ordered all his uniforms, so our expenses should greatly hopefully be minimized now from this point forward, with exception of this.
You wanted me to buy four rifles?
No, two.
Two?
Yes. One for each patrol unit.
That's just a quote on four different ones?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, because it has the total at the bottom.
Right, yeah, that would be if I bought one for each, so, but no, just four. Four of the Stags, or I'm sorry, two of the Stags.
I don't see a problem with getting two of the Stags, like you were talking about. I was kind of the impression that you had rifles.
Yeah, I was too, but I double-checked and confirmed it.
I know it was a big discussion a long time ago, if my memory serves me correct, the council didn't want...
I think that was before I even got on the...
It was.
They didn't think that we needed it.
Yeah, council at the time didn't have any idea what some of the rifles that would possibly be donated, they had no idea their capabilities. This has always been an issue, and I personally would like to see our officers equipped with the equipment that they need. And rather you guys have it and not need it than need it and not have it.
Sure. Or have to sit, stand by and wait on someone who has the equipment when you could... I mean, hate to talk about those things, but it seems like more and more they're getting closer to home, so...
I don't have an issue with it. I mean, the first week he was here, he saved us a bunch of money by getting vests that didn't cost us a dime, and, I mean, I'm not, I think it's fine. I mean, he could buy them whether he come to us or not. He actually come to us, wanted to purchase them, even though it's below his spending limit, so I'm fine with it.
And we're not just saving money.
I mean, he's upfront and honest with us about it.
Hopefully we got some other cost-saving, just want to save us some money up front and make our record-keeping a whole lot better for us all the way around.
I'm fine with it. I mean, I guess I'd make a motion to approve police department to purchase two Stag rifles at $842.97 apiece.
Second.
$842.79.
Oh, 79. I wrote it down wrong.
Motion?
$842.79.
Second then.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries for one. Thank you. You bet.
I've got a quick question.
Sure.
Bill and I, or Bill, at the request of the court, bought some UA kits, which are urine analysis kits, which you spend like 36 bucks or something.
Actually was shipping because that was the only way to ship it, $67.
Okay. Twelve... Those have an expiration date?
They have approximately 18, 12 to 18 months of life except, life shelf.
So we start to get to the end of the expiration date, we're going to get some volunteers.
Anything else for chief? Moving on, fire chief, Michael.
I got a quote to get both engines pumped tested. It came in at a little under $350 apiece, but that does not include mileage. So they can't give me a definite on mileage because if they can get three or four departments around the area, then they'll divide the mileage up. So it's going to be somewhere under $400 or possibly under $400 apiece. Just depends on how many they find. But it's something that has to happen, so... So I don't know how you want, if you just want me to get it and, I mean...
Do you have a spending limit?
$500.
Oh.
But it's times two, so...
Sure.
Okay.
So I don't, like I said, they couldn't give me an exact quote, so I don't...
Entertained motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second, and what's the estimated total? Or what's the total without mileage?
Like 346 something, so...
Okay. Apiece?
Yeah, it's almost $700 total without mileage.
Okay, so the authority of $700 plus mileage. Motion second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. Can you offer an explanation for your abstaining?
I don't need to.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else for fire chief? Okay. City clerk Jamie.
You only thought I was going to say nothing. I'm going to bring it up under me because I don't know where else to do it. We had our meeting with the Rick, old Dylan's Building Project going on. They, okay, where we're at right now, basically in the meeting, we want them, I didn't speak for council, but we just made it pretty apparent that we would want them to pay for their utilities because they're not paying for anything where they're at now. Lisa was going to check into any grants available for that. There's a community building grant, I don't know where she is on that. I think Jeff and Nick have been talking about the city being able to offer demolition help. So we're still really kind of in trying to figure everything out, but basically what I need to know for the next meeting is if the city, like, if we were to be able to make this a community building and get the grant, would the city be willing to be the middle, would the city be able to be the, I don't want to say middleman, but...
We'd have to be...
Landlord? Yeah, the, yeah, the middleman. I was trying to think of the...
I think something we need to suggest and something I asked them, I don't know why they didn't maybe bring this to the meeting, but their budget to see what, you know, they can afford because they're asking a lot from the city.
Right.
And if they can afford it, then why do we need to be involved? And, you know, the city, the utilities, the insurance, the, you know, they asked for possibly rent-free or maybe a 10-year lease for a dollar, basically, so... You know, maybe show an audit from last year, you know, so we know, you know, if they're asking for all this, you know, I told them, you know, and Mark agreed that basically, you know, we want, Mark and I want the Dylan's Building to be used by somebody like the rec. commission, but, you know, we kind of need some answers.
And that was the one thing that I was really curious about is why didn't they bring any financials to us? I mean, that would have been so helpful to us.
But it's not so much of knowing like what money that they have in their account or it's what they're willing, to me, it's what, show me a plan of what it's going to look like. I don't care the amount, and then from there, for what we're going to get, then from there we can see how long we can lease it to them, for how long, for a dollar. I mean, I really don't care about knowing what they have, as far as money was, I don't know what we're going to get.
What they're asking for, they're asking for all this. They're telling us that they can't afford it. Utilities, insurance to be paid over there, the building. So, you know, if, you know, if the, I mean, there's no reason for the city to pay utilities over there if they can afford it with their budget, is the way I feel, you know?
Yeah.
Regardless, me, whether it's in their budget or not, I still think we need to get something for utilities. If they don't have it, then I'd assume for them to wait.
My thing about it, here's the thing, if the city's looking at being the middle person for a grant to make it a community building, and we're paying the insurance and the utilities on it, why are we even messing with the rec. center? Let's do it for ourselves. If we're going to have all the investment in it, turn it into our own community center and move this meeting from here to there, use it, let the community use it. I mean, I'm not giving thousands and thousands of dollars a year for nothing. If they can afford to pay the utilities over there, then let them pay the utilities. I mean, we don't even...
And if they can't, then they won't be in there.
Well, but the thing is...
But they need to prove it to us.
Prove it to us so they can't afford to pay it if they want us to do it.
I asked them their budget multiple times.
They couldn't, they couldn't answer because they had nothing for us at that time.
Yeah, they said that they hadn't even discussed that part, so...
Exactly, right. I don't care what, how much they have in the bank, I just want to know if they can afford it.
Who controls their budget, doesn't the school board?
It's filtered from the school to the rec.
Nick controls a lot.
But I'm assuming that, yeah, the board is...
I think we want to know the budget or whatever, ask Josh. Josh Meyer will know.
I mean, they should be able to file to the public.
They should provide us financials.
I mean, that's the thing, I want to actually know that they can't physically afford to pay the utilities before I say...
Oh, I think Nick, Nick has come to me since that meeting and said he's pretty certain that they can cover that on you.
You know, but I also want to know how much money they've got saved to do this project. I mean, we got a rough drawing the one time Nick was here, and there was absolutely no breakdown on the price, you know? I mean, I can go in and tell you it's going to cost you $400,000 to remodel something, just winging it and hope that we hit it. I mean, it'd be a little nicer to see some detail of what their plan is, what their budget is, what they can and can't afford before I start saying, "Yeah, we'll give you, give you, give you." I don't mind helping out if we need to, if that's what it takes to make it work, but not without a little bit of information.
Well, and that's what I suggested, was he get ahold of someone and try to draw it out, like on a CAD system.
Right.
So we can kind of see better what is actually going on, so...
I mean, that's, that would be my suggestion when you guys have your next meeting, and...
Well, they're supposed to bring that at the next meeting, so...
Well, they're going to have a grant or whatever, they're going to have to have architectural drawings in the nesting for the architect.
Yeah, I'm sure you're going to have to have it engineered if you're going through a grant.
I'm sure it is too.
Of some type.
Something else they asked is for the city, you know, for demolition stuff over there for the city workers to maybe help with that, if they can steer inside, so, something they also asked for.
They asked if that would be possible from the city, so...
We talked about, I think, insurance. We talked about maybe $300, $400 a month right now, but, you know, once they put $400,000 into a building, you know, what's it going to be worth then, so...
And it was estimated at, what, 25, I have wrote down 2,500 to 3,000, that's what I made, that's what I estimated.
So, yeah.
But I mean, that's, that's complete speculation.
Right.
We don't know what it's going to be.
Right.
So, that's where we are on that, no need to spend too much time on it. The only other thing I have is next Saturday is our Fall Festival. We are changing the movie to 7:00 PM instead of 8:00. We don't want to hang out for an hour in the dark, so, yeah. And if the weather's crappy, we're going to go to the library.
You need to let me know as soon as possible because I can, so I can open it up for you.
And, I think that's it. Dang.
What else for Jamie?
Just one thing, Jamie, I just wanted to tell you, thank you very much. You've done wonders with my student during his hour. He is blossoming, so thank you.
He is.
You gals are doing a great job with him.
We'll get him talking.
Good.
Okay, city superintendent Jeff Williamson.
Council requested a cost from Chris Mansell on the possibility of concrete in the east end of Fifth Street out there to get past both interways and as far as Hamples driveway. And whether Jamie laid it on the table or not, we got a cost from him, I think I got it Friday, to go just west of Hamples, I think approximately 535 feet, eight inches thick with curb on the south side, two drainage boxes, the city would provide the grading and any elevation change for manholes, and the pipe for the drainage so that we could close it in from Hamples going east, and the total cost was 90,000. And so, and he left it open far enough that you can make a decision anytime between now and April 1st of next year.
And it has to be after January 1st of next year?
So you can't...
According to my calculations.
It has to be what?
Can't make a decision until after the 1st of the year?
Well, I mean, we can, we can make a decision.
But not to.
But...
Gotcha.
Through what Pam and I were looking at, we're looking at the special highway. Right now, our budget authority and our cash, our budget authority for the special highway is right around a little over 60,000, but in 2019 it is 120 or 130, so it, I think that's what I'm myself. So it's, it's enough in the budget for 19 to be able to do the whole entire project at 90,000 for 19, not for 18, we'd be having to, I mean, and we still could for 18, but we'd have to look at other avenues, which, I mean, other than special highway, we could look at the street department, but I don't know what you have sitting out there for.
There's 67,000 in...
Special Highway?
Special Highway, no, there's 20, yeah, 67,000 in, uh, Special Highway, and there's about eight or nine in the regular street fund. There's really not money available there to do it without some finagling or taking from somewhere else to finish it, which I would like to use some of that money for some other things, so I hate to nibble it down to where we have to pull it from a third place. I know that, I know that the city has about $400,000 in savings, there could be some money pulled out of there if you wanted to do it that way, because we still got, even though if you do decide to do that 535 feet, there's still 2,100 feet to the west of it that needs some sort of maintenance, which I'll bring up here in a minute when we get done with this, but, you know, if they want to do it, I think we can find the money to do it, as far as that goes. That doesn't include drainage pipe, which we would have to come up with something to come from Hamples east clear to the highway of some sort, you know, heavy enough to cross the driveway at Hamples and then something to flow water to the east of there, whether it's some 12, 10 or 12-inch water pipe or what we did, but some steel probably at Hamples and then transition to a plastic that we could drain and add it. We discussed it, you know, quite at length. We think we can make that part of it. Of course, I think everybody's seen the mess that we've had out there, but we've, we've done that partially for a reason, to see how much of that water we could get rid of. There is a problem, I discussed it with you, you know, in the past, that there's only about a foot of drop between the prairie going clear to the highway, so every bit of that water we can get rid of and make the bottom of that ditch better than we're trying to do, so, you know, the drainage is minimal, we could leave enough where we could put some kind of a bar screen or something on it on the west end of that pipe to block any kind of large trash from going through there so the water can still flow. But Chris seems to think he can make a drain, you know, if we, if we do decide to do it, so, anyway. That was an eight-inch thick street, so it's heavy enough for the trucks, so, anyway.
That's the cash. That's the cash.
So what's, do you, so it's just...
Just because the cash is there doesn't mean we do have the ability to spend it.
Gotcha.
That's why I keep talking about, like, making sure we're working at the budget and the cash.
Right. That's the cash balance of the special highway fund, but there's 67,000 available out of that 122?
To be able, that we have the budget authority for, yes.
Right, yeah.
And we fixed that in the budget for 19.
Right, okay. That's, that's what I wanted to clear up there.
Yeah, yeah. We've been talking to Melissa quite a bit and clearing things up with, with all of that. Pam and I are trying to make sure that we understand it fully so we can make sure that we're being able to suggest the best routes.
Did you get rid of the water today?
Most of it, we've got most of the dirt dried out. We want to cut it one more time tomorrow, you know, to make sure that we can, but I think we're going to get rid of 90% of it, I think. And we got it dried out a lot today, so, and we do, we have decent flow. It's going to take a little while longer, but it's drying up by then, so...
Thoughts, council?
You're putting a steel culvert back in.
We'll have to put a steel culvert in at Hamples. I don't think anything else will get crushed. I haven't found one yet, I'm still looking. You know, galvanized is not going to last, the one we pulled out of there was in pretty sad shape. I'm going to talk with the county guys and see if they have any, they have some 10-inch piling, I know that's strong enough to do it, whether they got anything any bigger or not. We're really not sure just yet how big, we want to get as big a pipe in there as we can get in, but we've made about, you know, from, by the time we get to the east side of Vernon Lights property along, behind Jerry Longson in there, that's where the biggest hang-up on the water is right now. If we can get the rest of that to flow, then we'll have a depth that we know how much we can put in, how much we can cover up, so we can get the largest end that we can. That was a, it was a 12 or a 14 that was in there, and I'd like to go every bit that big, if not a little bigger, so, that's kind of where we're at.
I think we need an engineer.
An engineer.
No more than it costs when you're talking $90,000 of possibility of getting sued later on for something not going right, and that's what it comes down on if, when something goes wrong. No more than it's going to cost compared to 90 grand on top of whatever we're going to finish off to do on Fifth Street.
I think we can fix it with rock.
We can throw rock away the whole thing for right now, I might be okay with that, but as far as just starting to mess with these grades like we're doing and finish it off, I'm not going to vote for anything without an engineer. I talked to Phil Nasser and he really got me thinking on that.
I bet you an engineer's going to cost you...
I don't care what it costs.
20% of that 90,000.
I don't care what it costs, I'd just rather do it right, guys. If we're going to do concrete, if we can just throw rock on it, that ain't a big deal.
I really think before we, yeah, we need a base underneath it before we get too excited about anything, I think.
You know, Phil said that, that, you know, throwing rock won't hurt and it could possibly help us later on too.
We have to do something anyway.
No, I understand, but I really don't think we should do concrete without an engineer that much at that cost right there. I don't care what the engineering cost, I mean, that's basically insurance, is what it is.
Well, the water either flows or don't.
They've got the best level that you'll ever get out there right now, which is water, and they've got most of it out. And if you put rock on it, you've got it going to the south side.
I mean, the thing is, is I feel if we can, if we can dig the ditches deep and wide and leave a street and build it up and rock it, whatever we do the first 500 feet, whatever, but I'm talking about the whole entire road, because you can't fix one end of it and not fix the rest of it.
Exactly, yeah.
Because you're solving absolutely nothing. People beat the rest of it out, they drag it up on your brand-new concrete, you have potholes forming right at the edge of the concrete, going up on it, coming off of it. I mean, it's something you're going to fight all the time.
Yep.
And you can't maintain the first part of the concrete with a road grader. I mean, you're just not going to be able to. I mean, all you're going to be able to do is just feather it right up to the concrete, so, I mean, you're going to have to do something even further down if you do that first part with concrete. That's going to hold up, but you can't do anything until you get the street built up and good and solid.
I think we've got a pretty good start on it. Jim stopped out today and visited with us a little bit while we were doing that, but, you know, a street's pretty flat, you know, whether you realize it or not, for that whole half a mile, it's pretty flat. But I think if we can put a couple hundred ton of rock on it and work it in to what we've got right now, we've kind of got it up to where we've got maybe 3% grade, you know, going to the south, and we go ahead and get that ditch straightened out, get some rock in there, get a base underneath it. There's so much, there was so much gravel hauled in there that it just, you know, it was like trying to wring out a sponge, basically is what it was. And we've gotten to the point where, like I say, I think in a couple hours in the morning, we'll know where the bottom of that ditch is going to be. And if we go ahead and get a couple hundred ton of rock and get it worked in, we're going to try and put the scarefire teeth on the grader and peel it open, work the rock into it, bring it back and pack it and keep building it. I think we'll have a pretty good road by the time we get done.
Looks just like when they did...
At least for this time, you know, for this, for this part of time to get a good sub-base underneath it. And then after that, if you choose to go ahead...
I agree, you got a base, but, I mean, the majority of your traffic is turned into the grocery store.
Sure. Well, and it's coming out of Hamples, that's the big thing. I mean, it's that little loop right there for 500... Sure, well, and it's coming out of Hamples, that's the big thing, I mean, it's that little loop right there for five hundred feet. And if we don't get some base right in there, the trucks are just gonna keep beating it down.
Right.
You know.
So I just don't think that rock is a permanent solution.
Oh, no, but it's a subbase for what you're gonna do, it will go ahead and hold what you do on top of it. So I think we need to start somewhere and it, and you know, when it's wet, it's so mushy. I mean, it's just pounded and just beat to death, but we're gonna have to get, we're gonna have to get some base underneath it before I think we can. And I think Chris would tell you the same thing, that until we get it firmed up, you get something that doesn't crawl, we're kind of wasting our time, you know.
Which is the same as on the south side of the cemetery, that road used to be horrible, and they come in and cut that ditch out. And put a, just a ton of rock in there, and that road's been perfect.
I've been on the phone with Phil a couple times this week, he's out of town till tomorrow night or Thursday, but. They're unloading rock in Great Bend. Tran, what they call, he called it trans, transload or something, and it's a better grade of rock than what we normally would buy.
What about?
But I don't know what the cost is, and I won't know until Friday when we go up.
What are you estimating, a hundred tons?
I'd like to put two hundred ton on it, a hundred tons not very much, it's five dump truck, well, or five, five end dumps is what it is, and you're talking about. You know, we'd like to get clear up to the VFW, at least get some in there. That road's been so bad and misgraded for so long and the manholes are so shallow. That we're bringing that dirt across to bring it back where we can cover that and get a drain clear to go to the south. But, you know, two or three hundred tons is not gonna hurt it at all. The, the rock, the kind of AB, what we call AB three, which is, it's not AB three, but it's a standard. Kind of a name for, for the shoulder rock that the state puts on, which is what we use, which is a limestone and clay mixture. He says in time we'll just fall apart. It'll crush to the point that it's, it'll just, it'll just be gone, you'll end up hauling more in, so. I think a better grade of rock that's harder, that will go in and set a sharp rock that will bite into that and hold. Once we get started on it, then, you know, let the traffic beat on it a while, let's see what happens. But we're gonna have to sand something with the sand, there's just nothing there, I mean, it's, it's, they've hauled tons of gravel in there over the years, I mean, we're still rolling it out. We had a windrow of it this tall, and you, it's just like a sand pile that somebody just wet with a hose. Well, we finally did get it worked in with what we have there, but still, I think we're still gonna have to have some firmness on the bottom to hold it, so. Then if we can get some use this winter out of it, look at it in spring, see what you think. I mean, your bid's good till April, give us, give us time to get it worked up and get it draining and see what we got then.
Which I still think, even then, you're still gonna have to have that time to get your base in there anyway before you can do any work on it. And what the, the money situation.
But I, I can't tell you what the, I can tell you what the freight, about what the freight's gonna be, but the rock could be. You know, this other was eight fifty, this could be as much as twelve or thirteen dollars a ton. It'd be six hundred dollars a load with, with freight, and you get twenty-five to twenty-seven ton on a load, so. It'll be, we could spend six, seven, eight thousand dollars. Which we do have the money available to do if you, if you choose to let us put it on there in order to get a base on it.
And you're talking going from highway up all the way to Prairie?
I would like to go clear to Santa Fe right now is what I'd like to do, that's where the biggest mud problem is. You know, we've got it graded up now, we've got the road blocked off at Santa Fe at the VFW, and we'd like to string it through there, scarify it, roll it and pack it, just keep rolling and pack it till we can get some firmness to it. I'd say two hundred and fifty or three hundred ton. I don't think would be any too much, be a real good start. And tailgate it in and do it so that we can work it and roll it together as we pack it.
How deep is that ditch you're cutting into those yards, I mean, how, how deep is that coming now, I haven't looked, you know?
On the south side?
Yeah.
Well, I guess it kind of depends on how you look at it, because the shoulder, the back shoulder, we've left completely, I mean, we haven't touched the south side of it.
The south side's the only we're digging out, right?
Yeah, but I mean, the south side of that shoulder, we haven't touched, only in the bottom to be able to get the water to drain. So the grass and stuff that was all there is still there, just trying to get it off the road and get it into the bottom, so the biggest, the deepest it is right now. Maybe twenty-four inches at the most.
Do you see a problem at all, like, with water gathering up in there, I mean?
Not if we can go ahead, you know, we had some grass and stuff in there, of course, we pulled it out on Thursday, then we got the snow over the weekend, we already had the water in there, we tried to get it up to where we could dry it out a little bit and then had to leave it set over the weekend, but. I think a couple more passes and I think we'll know, you know, what we have for a bottom. And then it's gonna have to heal, I mean, over time with water and grass and over and that stuff, but. You know, we get the pipe in at Hamples. You know, then I think, I think we, we kind of got it by the tail, if we can just get the base stayed there where the water will drain off of the road and into the ditch. As long as we can kick it to the edge, you know, it's out of the way, it's not in the middle of the road, that's the biggest problem we've had always in the past. Mainly because of the manholes, but now by pulling that ditch back and bringing that dirt up and with some rock and some base. Why, we're over the top of the manholes where we can drag it with just some firmness, we just don't have any firmness there, that's what we're lacking.
The bottom down, the, the bottom of that where you're cutting it out, do you, are you guys trying to get a slope going or not?
Very little, we don't, I mean, there's just not much.
You know, cause anywhere like, anywhere headed east, if it's high at all, then.
Oh, we've taken those pieces out, yeah, and we still got some water laying in there. But we had to get it firm enough where when we set the blade back in there on the last pass, that we don't slide that grater down in the bottom. It's been so muddy along that south edge, so. It's just a time, it's a time consuming deal any way you look at it.
That's just my fear is just flooding, just if, if we don't have it somewhat graded okay, that we, eventually we'll just, it'll start to just go up and up and over the road.
Well, what's happened is it has laid in the road because it couldn't get away, and we've cut quite a bit out of it. But you know, for nine inches of rain and some snow, we've gotten rid of most of it, it looks better now than it has in years. I mean, we've got some, we've got the holes taken out of it, we found all the manholes, there's four manholes in there, two of them we didn't realize were in there. And we've got it built back up now, if we can go ahead and bring it on up and keep the slope on it that we've got, we'll get rid of, I'll bet we get rid of ninety percent of that water. So now from there back west, you know, that towards the VFW and in there, it's kind of marginal, I mean, it's just flat, there's no two ways about it, so.
So the plan is to just, you're just kind of flipping the dirt over itself?
We're just rolling it, we'd like to mix it back in and pack it, yeah, is what we'd like to do, we're trying to get the gravel out of it, cause the gravel just slides, I mean, it's like, it's like stepping into a sandbox, you know, your feet just. That's kind of the way it works with the road too, but we've got it up now where we blended it with the dirt that was underneath it and firmed it up.
And then rock, you're thinking rock culvert?
In type, we just take our scarefire teeth and we'll, and we'll rip that road, and as we bring that dirt back up, then we'll mix it all together and start packing it back down, so.
How?
You go ahead.
I have a bunch of questions. How wide are you planning on going with the rock?
The all we got's about twenty-seven feet, that's the most we can get, the rest of it's either poles or it's ditch. I mean, we'll do the full width of the road, yeah, as much as we can put on it, as wide as we can keep it. Cause it's narrow the way it is. So it's narrow, it's as narrow as most side streets. So the whole, the whole width was only forty feet when we started, but, you know, with the ditch and everything else.
And as far as maintaining that road later on, what's a guy do, just go back and drag it?
Yeah, just drag it like everything else, I mean, the roads have gone downhill for so long, when we get this one done, we're gonna move to Southwest Street, gonna do the same thing, you know. So we've got more room down there than we got out here, so.
What, is there any chance of mixing in when you're doing the rock, mixing in any of them asphalt millings with that to help with the base?
I think what's gonna happen is it's gonna chunk up as it gets cold, see, rock's movable, asphalt, once it bonds. It's just there, and, and every time you split it, you're gonna end up with chunks. I mean, you know what it's like when you drive down the street and the asphalt chunks on the edge where they broke up, I think that's what's gonna happen to it, I hate to put it in there.
I didn't, I didn't know if mixing in with that rock would help it hold in there.
I, I don't know, I think the sharp rock probably, you know, sharp rock will probably hold as good as anything, I'm just afraid to put very many millings in them. Cause it kind of gangs up and clumps together, you know? And then you end up, you have to, i- if you get it, if you get too much of it up on top and then you can't drag it, if it's cold. You know, if it's hot, it'll roll, I mean, it's just like asphalt, but when it gets cold, then it's just gonna get chunky and I'm afraid it's gonna make a mess. The rock we can handle, it's the asphalt, when it, when it clumps together, I don't think we can. I think we're just gonna have more in there than we really want, I'd rather just stay with the rock if I can.
I don't, I don't know, is eight thousand dollars is gonna get you very far on rock?
It'll get us a good first round, I think, you know, to know what we can do on that street and what we can hold. You know, that'll give us probably three hundred ton, three hundred fifty ton.
But each truck hauls around twenty ton, don't it?
Twenty-seven, about twenty-five to twenty-seven.
And you're thinking three hundred?
I think about three hundred, about fifteen loads, fourteen to fifteen loads probably. I'm guessing.
I think it'll take more, I, I think it'll take, how thick do you think you're gonna be?
We're just gonna work it in, thickness doesn't mean anything to me, I just want it in to put the base in to firm it up. Because you're really not gonna see what you call a layer of rock, what you're gonna see is it incorporated in the dirt. To form, to firm that dirt up, that's what you're gonna do.
Do you think that, that the road, I mean, I know you put material on the road, but do you think the road itself is pretty solid?
Down underneath it is.
Down underneath?
Yeah.
So I mean, our odds of pushing that rock further down?
Waying down out of sight?
Probably not gonna happen?
I don't think so, so we might get six or eight inches in there, you know?
Because I know when I've done my parking lot at my shop, I pushed rock twenty-four, twenty-six inches deep.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I hauled probably sixty loads of rock and crushed concrete in there before I got a base.
We saw good, hard, firm dirt this afternoon. By finally getting to the point that we could cut it down, I mean, we saw dirt that hasn't seen sunlight quite a while. We cut it pretty deep, and I think if we scarify it, roll that in there and work it back and forth and pack it, I think we'll get some firmness to it, I really do, without getting clear out of hand. I don't think we'll have two foot of rock in by any means, you know, I'd say six or eight inches probably. And, and, and there's gonna be places that, no, it won't stay, like where they come out of that driveway, where they come, you know, eighty thousand pound truck come out of that driveway. Eventually, we're gonna keep putting more and more in there, but a lot of those places don't have that heavy traffic. They just have, you know, standard pickups or cars or whatever, and dragging it and bringing it back, we'll put it back in there and pack again, you know, so.
What did you say you had in your?
Well, I've got two different, I've got two different funds I can take it out of, the street fund. The street fund, I've got about. Eight thousand, somewhere close, give or take a little bit, about eight thousand dollars there. And, and we also, I mean, depending on how you want to look at it, there was still, there was still fund money in there for street sewer sidewalk repairs, which was another fifteen that we haven't taken anything out of. So there's basically twenty-three thousand dollars in the street fund without taking anything out of special roads. And there's still sixty, over sixty in the special roads. So. There's ample money for rock, and like I said, I'd like to put, you know, depend, with the trucks down south on West Street, I'd like to put about that much rock on that one when we get to it.
You don't have quite as far to go there though, do you?
No, but I've got more heavy trucks, I mean, I think it'll require more rock than what this will. I think in the first five or six hundred feet, we'll put more rock in that first or fi- five or six hundred feet out here, then we will the rest of it, yeah. Cause ninety percent of those trucks are making that loop right there, you know, in and out, and after that is just basically standard travel, I mean, we do have heavy trucks on it, but not like we do over here. But we're gonna get more dirt over here too, we've got fifteen feet probably on the west side of that road.
Well, you ain't got a ditch on the west side.
Well, we're gonna have when we get done.
That's what I'm saying, you don't have a ditch, you've got a whole ditch to ditch.
We got gravel to get rid of there and pull up and do that too, but, you know, being able to scarify it and work it in there, work it back and forth. I think we can put, there, at one time, there was a pretty good base on that road down there, but it's been gone for quite a few years. So.
Thoughts, you know, I'd say try to get the base built up and, you know, look back into this, because I don't think rock, longer term, is gonna do anything, because you're never gonna maintain that, you know.
I think it's a starter.
Holes, I, I agree.
It's definitely a starter.
But we're gonna have to put it in there. Doing something.
It's a constant, it's a constant ongoing maintenance deal, I mean, every time, you know, I mean, that road gets a lot of traffic. A lot of traffic, it's got holes in it every time it rains. You know, but if we can get it built up and get it firm, maybe we can slow that down a little bit, get something on there to let that water drain, the water's what's cutting those holes, I mean, if you get the water off of it, the drains. The holes will be minimal compared to what they were. It's no different than asphalt or anything else, when you get ice down in it and snow and it starts popping the asphalt, that's what does it, you know, the moisture. Expansion and contraction of the moisture, so, if we can get some rock in there and get it firmed up, I think we gotta start. I, I think like you, Ryan, I don't think it's, I don't think you'll solve the problem, but we gotta start.
Yeah, I just. You're just gonna get an airful of people driving, you know, down that in the grocery store, it's just gonna be a constant maintenance issue, and I. I understand just concrete in little ways and rocking isn't really the answer either, cause you can't, like Marc said, great up to the concrete very easy, but. You know, the majority of that traffic, trucks and everything else is turning, it's just.
Next thing, we'll just have to see, meant that parking a lot of Hamples and then we can shortchange most of that, save most of that street, just have them turn off a fourth and go through there. It's just a joke, guys, I mean.
Be nice to.
You see a lot of people going, you see a lot of people going through there, you know? And I understand, and it's just as rough or worse than the street, but it's a shortcut, so.
So how much you wanting to spend on rock?
I'd like to spend about, you know, I, I can't, I, I wished I could give you a price, but I'm gonna guess seven to eight thousand dollars.
I mean, you said you got twenty-three thousand between the two funds?
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna go hog wild, but I'd like to get about two or three hundred ton on it and look at it, and then if it doesn't look like it's gonna be enough. I'd like to have you guys look at it before we jump any farther.
I'd like to say no more than ten thousand dollars on rock to get us started.
Okay.
I mean, that's where I, that's how I feel about it, that's at least, that'll give us a good idea.
I just don't have a clue how much three hundred ton would be, I, I mean.
I don't, I don't, I'm just guessing.
You know, I, I don't have a clue, but. How soon are you gonna get rock rolling, Jeff?
I'd like to start getting it fairly quick, we've got some other stuff to do, but I have to line it up. I talked to Bob about hauling it and he said even, I wanna stockpile it, is what I wanna do, and I wanna put it on the dump trucks. So we can lay it in there and let the grater work it, so we don't have a pile of rock out here like this in the middle of the street. So, um, first off, we, we need to do some shuffling around, I need to mix some salt yet for winter. And move some stuff, so it's gonna take a week or so before I'd be ready to get any rock at all, but I wanna go up there with Phil and talk to these guys. And look and see, if this isn't the rock, you know, I'm not gonna buy it. But he seems to think that it's a better quality than what we've been getting, we don't have near the freight by going twenty-five, twenty-eight miles that we could go to Florence.
Yeah, you're gonna go to Florence, it's gonna cost you five hundred dollars freight.
That rock's terrible too.
It is.
Well, that's the thing, that's what I say, this AB three style rock, it just powders up and it just goes to mush, you know? And I think a good, sharp, hard rock will stay, so I'd like to start there, is what I'd like to do.
I think I'm okay with that, ten grand's pretty fair.
I mean, it'd give us an idea, I mean, if you get up there and look at it and get a price and ten grand ain't gonna cover just what we need to get started, I guess, let us know.
We really won't know until we get good and started, you know?
Right.
But I think we'll know within the first few loads if it looks like it's gonna be something that will.
But I mean, I think you'll be, once you get a price, you'll be able to figure about how much you can buy with that ten thousand dollars.
I think so, yeah, yeah, and know how far we can go. I'd really like to get that first, you know, clear back to Santa Fe, I don't know how much we can get, the road is firmer to the west. You know, down from, say, from Danny's west than what it is on the east end, but it doesn't get the beaten that that first half of that road gets. So, I mean, we got a guy that's not driving, we had a guy that was parking a truck out there overnight, now he's not doing that anymore. But it was pounding pretty good too, I mean, it was loaded most generally always when it was there. It's gone now, but if we can start with that, I think I can kind of give you an idea of where we're gonna be after that maybe.
What do you think's the timeframe on that it's gonna take then, cause if we've had?
We're gonna, no, it's, it's graded up, we're gonna open it tomorrow. Yeah, we just, we have so much mud out there, by tomorrow evening, that road will be open. It, they can drive down it now, but the south side of it was a little soft, we didn't want anybody in it. But we will not put the culvert back in that driveway just yet. So, but we'll make it so the road can be traveled, yeah, tomorrow evening.
Jeff, what about a timeframe, once you start putting this rock down, are you gonna have the road, I mean?
I hope we, we'll do it as we.
Just thinking about those trucks, you know, coming in or coming in out of grocery stores, you know, I mean.
I think we'll do it, I think we'll do it and leave it open, you know, as much as we can, I'll just stick a guy on the, yeah. And the east end's not the big deal for us, it's down in the middle. Yeah, we've stayed away from them guys and let them in and out of there, so. And if we have to.
That east end is packed in there pretty good, I mean, through all the construction and stuff and that, I mean, it's.
You bet, but no, no, I'm not gonna stop them from being able to load none of them, so if I have to just stick somebody down there. You know, and we'll just stop while they get in and out, yeah, it's not a big deal, we'll work with them.
Not gonna be a week or so?
No, 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 if we do it in a week, we'll open it every day. I'm not, I'm not gonna tear it to the point that we're just gonna roll it and pack it and roll it. I'm not, I'm not gonna tear it to the point that we're just gonna roll it and pack it, roll it and pack it till we get what we want.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, I'm not gonna close it and leave it locked up, no. Providing I can keep the water off of it for a little while. I mean, you know, that rain and that snow, it really messed us up, but I think now we've kind of got a handle on it, so.
I'd make a motion to spend no more than ten thousand dollars on rock for Fifth Street to get started on the base.
Second. Motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries four oh.
I think that's really all I've got, unless you've got something for me.
Did you ever see a bill on the truck?
Not yet. I'm hoping they lost it.
I hope they lost it too.
I haven't seen it. No, I'm hoping they lost it. But, but what I saw from them was the same, what Cody brought home was the same as what they quoted us, so I assume we'll get invoice for it.
Jeff, I got a, I just built the fence over here for Margie.
Yes.
What's the deal with the alley back there?
That alley, that building is not supposed to be in that alley. We've discussed that with the school clear from last spring on and it has not been moved yet.
Well, I'm gonna move it for them.
That'd be fine.
But it, it is an alley from the post.
From the fence, from the, from the tennis court fence to the west.
To the post.
Sixteen and a half feet, basically where the, where the service is.
Cause right now it's just grass. Once that building's moved, I think we need to call rock in there, cause that trash truck uses it.
Yeah, we can, yes. You know, it's, we haven't been able to get through there at all, but we'll be glad to. Yeah, you let me know when you're done, we'll get something in there. We'll get it straightened up because it's been weaved out down like this for so long. Yeah, we'll get it straightened up, be glad to. Yep. That's all I got.
Hey, city attorney, John Beverley.
I'm doing.
Thank you, John. Mayor me, hey, Jeff, I had a couple of questions on Fourth Street from some people.
We're gonna do them tomorrow.
The holes back in the street.
We're waiting for them to dry out and get warm enough, the asphalt will crawl tomorrow's the day.
Kind of what I said to them myself, so.
It is. I'm going to a K M B A meeting Thursday. Uh, in Wichita and I'm gonna swing by a place called P M S I that sells winter asphalt patching too for holes. I'm gonna look at it and see what it costs. We might wanna keep a little bit of it on hand. Gets cold and icy and we can't do that, but yeah, tomorrow's the day.
I trusted you guys had it, but I've done my due diligence.
We do. We sure do.
Okay, moving on to old business. Do we still need discussion on roads?
Nope, that got discussed.
That's what I thought. Okay, trucks, no routes.
I need to know what, where we need to go to get this into effect, you know, whether I need to designate those roads for John or how, how the council wants to do it.
And I'll add that, that it would have to be two separate orders. It's your truck route and your snow route.
Okay, cause I had the guys kind of take account of where the signs were and that stuff as far as to let trucks. And you know, when we first did it, we did it from the highway coming into the elevator. Uh, off of two eighty-one, but I told them, I said, it needs to go clear through town.
Right.
It needs to go south on Broadway and needs to go clear out to the edge of the city limits following Broadway out, so. Um, they're gonna count the signs. Whatever we don't have, we'll get. When we designate it, that's the way we'll designate it there, going east and west clear through. And then with the snow route, we'll make sure we have snow route signs everywhere that we need to. Uh, Main and Broadway, First and Fourth for Fourth Street to stop at Exchange. So that we get the downtown stuff and going east and all the first streets straight through. All of Broadway, all of Main. So that's what, kind of what we've got in mind, unless the council has something else they wanna do.
That was my question about the truck routes is they're gonna be able to like leave the elevator and get to Old Fifty, basically.
Yes.
Yeah, they're gonna be able to go south.
Yeah. And, and we also thought we might oughta do it on West Street because that's basically the way that fertilizer guys do, so we'll allow that the same way.
Right, and as long as we have something in there with the loading and unloading, then they have destination.
We'll get a map, we'll get a map of where those, where those go and then let you decide on what you wanna do on weights and that stuff after that.
I'm okay with, with going ahead with the trucks and stuff, but. I don't know if I'm okay with putting all of that in the ordinance.
No, that's just Stafford's ordinance.
I know, I know. All I'm saying is, you know, is the whole thing of basically fourteen five oh one. Oh, no. I, I'm okay with the thirty-six thousand pounds.
I didn't see it, so I don't know.
Yeah, you saw it last week.
I glanced at it, but I never did, I didn't take attention to it.
As far as following the truck routes.
Oh, for weights?
For weights.
Uh-huh.
You know, I'm okay with thirty-six thousand.
And can't we just add that into the ordinance you wrote a year ago?
But I, but I'm not really up for putting this stuff of not parking them there yet and.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if we wanna designate the truck routes and the snow routes, I'm okay with that, but.
Okay.
These other restrictions and stuff in here, we need.
We, we need to maybe talk to some.
We need to talk to some of the people that own that stuff and figure out what we can do to help them and they can help us. I mean, I don't wanna put it where they can't park on theirs, on the streets, you know?
The only restriction that I know the city has at this time as far as any kind of parking is for Anhydrous. Anhydrous cannot be parked in the city limits at all.
I'm not sure you can. Park anywhere but designated facility with Anhydrous.
I know that that's on the books and has been for a long time.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much.
So other than that, yeah, I understand what you're saying about anything else.
You know, I don't wanna, because if we put all this stuff in that ordinance with the truck route. We're gonna be awful busy up here on meeting nights.
I'm moving.
I mean, we've, we've gotta, we've gotta have a, a give, you know, both directions.
Yeah, gotta be, gotta, still, we all still gotta live here.
Wait in and Jeff can get John and I the streets and we'll get an ordinance together for that, yeah.
We'll get this done and then we'll go.
Yeah, I'm okay with the thirty-six thousand. I just don't want it to be that twenty thousand.
So what do you wanna do about, then when you're saying talk, have people, do you wanna announce it for truckers to come next meeting?
Well, I don't, no, maybe not necessarily the next meeting, but I guess maybe council members oughta start talking to people that drive trucks for a living in St. John.
Certainly gonna be read into the truck route ordinance that. They're prohibited from parking any, any other location.
I don't think we're gonna be able to pass that without having the restrictions.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can kind of ask law enforcement to keep off of it until. There's an opportunity to meet with, with those interest holders, but it.
Well, you don't really wanna park on the, is that what you said? You don't wanna park on the truck routes anyway, right?
Well, what I'm saying is the, the way it's gonna be read, that truck route ordinance is that you can't park except for delivery. Um, what does it say? Was it twenty-four hours?
I'm not saying going by their, their ordinance.
I, I know, I'm just saying, if you have, if you pass an ordinance that says you can't drive anywhere but on designated truck routes. It's going to be read and could be, uh, enforced like this fourteen five oh one.
Alright, so if we have a truck route in place and someone goes and parks their truck at the house and the chief wants to write them a ticket.
You just put without destination.
Based on what it says.
If their destination is their house, I don't know how you can keep them from writing them a ticket for parking at their house.
Okay, well, let me do this. I will see what I can do about it and can I send it to you to review?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I just. You start telling them they can't park in front of their house and we don't have a backup plan of where they can park? There are gonna be a lot of unhappy people in this town.
Right.
If anything, we can still pass the snow route.
Sure. Okay, yeah. Alright, I'll get, I'll get a map before next meeting, we'll get it done.
Talk to people that have trucks and bring it up at the next meeting anywhere?
I just expressed your concerns with the, with the road, talking to, you know, maybe the truck drivers that maybe park in town, that, you know, just the, maybe the lines.
The, the one time we dealt with this, I dealt with this, I'm gonna have some oil and gas clients when Pratt was considering. Changing their truck route because of the wind farm, and I'm talking about Pratt County, the wind farm, uh, traffic. What, what they did was they said, this is what we're thinking about doing and they published it. And said, is this gonna have a problem with what you do with your truck? And it led to several, and it's led to like a working group or working committee and it led to several different meetings. So maybe that's what needs to happen is this proposed language and let them, you know, address whether it's gonna cause problems to them personally.
Try to do something that makes everybody happy or mostly happy.
I mean, you know, asking if there's a better place that you can park. I mean, I mean, really, right in front of your house, you're turning the street.
What kind of an ordinance do they have in Pratt? They don't allow it.
They did, they, after the working group, they decided not to pass it.
Oh, they didn't pass it? You don't see them. That's why I wondered.
It was required, if it involved heavy equipment in, in trains, which moves our train.
Oh, yeah, sure.
That's for.
And, and, you know, they wanna park in front of their house. If you wanna assess a bill for fixing the street in front of their house, then they're not gonna like that either. So I mean, it's, it's, it comes down to. Yeah, oh, it's not your fault, but it's not our fault either. It's, it's.
Well, that's my thing. I just don't wanna be there and say, well, this is how we're gonna do it, whether you like it or not. I'd rather have their input on it.
By the ma- by the same token, we can try and provide a space where we can give them an alternative, you know, too.
Say, this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
Here's the alternative.
Yeah. I mean, it was, you know.
It is what it is.
Maybe okay with parking somewhere else.
As long as it's not that and that stuff, you know?
And maybe someone will say, well, you know, I can park this here, but.
Yeah.
Right, it's just not as convenient.
Yeah.
You know?
I'm telling you, half these people that drive trucks around here, when I go on the property and try to tell them this, I'm probably gonna get shot.
Absolutely agree.
I mean, it's just an issue and what do you?
Right, well, it's not, and, and it's, and, and you get the, well, we're a, we're a small agricultural community, so is everybody else. And everybody else has these rules. It's just that we've been in a town where we haven't done anything for years and now that we're making changes.
But I think some of this is kind of excessive what they have in here.
I agree.
I mean, I'd like to know how well they enforce some of this.
I was gonna say.
I bet you they enforce it pretty good.
Looks a little off the wall to me, you know?
I think they enforce it pretty good.
Oh, they might, yeah.
That's why their roads are fabulous.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
We just need to do what's best for everybody involved, find the best alternative.
Right, but I want their input.
Right, absolutely. Well, that's the best alternative.
Yeah. I think that's only fair that we get their input on this, so. I'll, that'll check out. I don't think it's a violation. It makes you say simple fraction.
Okay.
So the plans at the next meeting, let's see if we've done some input to people and go from there.
I'm fine with that, yeah. We can discuss it next meeting.
I'm not really talking to anybody.
I see a lot of them truck drivers that live here in St. John have a shop.
Well, that's where you're lucky. They're down the best of you. You're not gonna step on their property and go.
He's gonna make a.
I'll go knock on their door. I don't care.
Like their East of his shop, you just get her about ten inches, they can just swing them in there and park them. Plug them into his liking or collect the money from him.
I could park them out back, but I'm gonna need a lot more rock than what I put up front.
You ain't wrong. Oh, shoot.
Looking at trucks.
With another, no other old business, moving on to new business, no new business, so we're moving on to executive session. We're not, the Hudson sewer thing isn't.
Yeah, it's done. I mean, Jamie put, she didn't know whether I was done or not.
Been there done that, so.
Yeah.
Quit interrupting, right? Okay, moving on to executive. Moving on to executive session, ten minutes to discuss non-elected personnel regarding possible hiring of a part-time police officer.
To include?
To include chief, returning HR, accounting manager.
Everybody but me and Mike.
I can go home.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries four oh, will reconvene at eight thirteen. Meeting back to order at eight thirteen. No action being taken at this time.